Welcome to the June 28, 2021, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. Prior to tonight's meeting, we'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Murray, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
God have peace. We invite you to preside over this meeting, although those gathered will inevitably have different opinions, give all of us unity of spirit as a body, as a city, and as a community. Help us to listen actively and politely as others share their points of view. Let us have gratitude for our colleagues and for our neighbors who take the time to come here and speak. Help us to work as a unified whole in combining ideas and perspectives for a better Sandusky community. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and across our city and work together on our shared mission. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Briggs, please call the roll.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Minzer?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of June 14, 2021. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I'm with you that we accept the minutes of the June 14 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second. It's been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Turn to our opportunity for residents in the audience to provide us with any questions regarding tonight's agenda. Step to the microphone and identify yourself with a name and address, and tell us what you're thinking.
Commission President, Commissioners, Tom Lamarka, 20648 Street. Item two on the agenda regarding the licensing agreement with a structural benefit for the bikeway pathway amounting to $2,160 for five years. Just wonder why those fees could not have been absorbed into the $4.4 million contract with Spear Brothers doing all the other work. It just seems like nothing until you need the funds for something else. And I mean, it's a trivial amount. Why didn't they cover that expense? Item number three regarding the licensing agreement with creative outdoor advertising for approximately 30 trash recycling bins at $500 per bin for approximately $15,000 that's going to be taken away from the Horticultural Division budget. These colorful advertising bins were previously self-supported by the miniscule monies generated by the plastic and cans, plus the advertising on them. And I don't think that they ever really generated $15,000 a year in recycled materials. So I don't know why we're going to start paying someone $15,000 a year now. I believe the city already pays Cyclone, a hauling company for downtown, and we should reach out to them or others for some recycling type bins, or buy our own and have the hauler handle this for us. I don't think it's going to be a $15,000 issue, except for the unknown number of Dora cups that in itself should be a self-supporting trash haulaway. And then item number six, the new TIF, I'm just not quite sure how that came about for the Hogriff building. That's all at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarka. Additional questions from the audience regarding the agenda? Yes, sir.
Chris Whedle, 403 East Adams. I read on the, as part of the TIF, that there's an agreement that the city will pay any legal fees if any citizens, taxpayers of Sandusky want to find out the details of the agreement. So you're going to use taxpayer dollars to defend, to keep the taxpayers from finding out what's in the agreement. I guess the question is, who do we really represent? Do we represent as a board? Do we represent the taxpayers? Or do you represent the investor? It doesn't make sense that if the citizens want to know something, their tax dollars are going to go to keep them from finding it out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Additional questions from the audience on tonight's agenda?
Hello, my name's Tom Baskin, 815 Bardchar. I have similar concerns about the TIF. If we're going to set the price of the value of that property from the beginning, why haven't we heard what that price is? Why haven't we heard what is the amount that the state of Ohio has already granted the Hogriff fees? And if we're saying, or somebody is saying, this is going to kick off $200,000 a year at a what, a 1 and 1/4% property tax rate? That's a $17 million building being put up for $8.8 million. How is this making sense? I kind of wish you guys would have communicated with the public and come up with these hard numbers, which you must have before you set any kind of a TIF. How are you even planning to vote tonight if you don't have those numbers? And if you do, why didn't you let them out to the public? The schools are going to be getting a fraction of what they would have been getting. Everybody's for development, but why do we keep having to use TIFs and keep everything secret? And that agreement that he just mentioned, where the city is going to notify the Hogriff fees if there is a FOIA or any other request for documentation, and then defend them through court? Why are we electing a city commission that is going to actually fight us for information? It doesn't make any sense. They can keep their personal financial records quiet, but this is a public meeting and a public TIF. How can we not have any of this information? And there's a lot of discussion throughout the community right now. And I know you guys are aware of it. Mr. Harris was part of it. Everybody wants answers, and nobody can believe that you're going to vote tonight. It's, what are you voting on? So that's just the main point tonight. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Additional questions from the audience regarding the agenda? Ms. Briggs, I'm aware of several email questions that you received regarding the agenda, so if you would read those for us, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, President Brady. The first comes from Tim Schwanger of 362 Sheffield Way in Sandusky. Regarding item three, he said, "The city's cost is $15,000 based on a total of 30 bins, which is subject to change upon adjustments in the number of bins necessary to accommodate downtown. Please explain this cost to the city. The current downtown recycling bins were at no cost to the city through a previous agreement." And regarding item six, quoting, or Title 20 confidentiality quoting from the TIF agreement, "Unless otherwise directed by court order, city will treat the loan documents, the equity investment documents, the commitments of any tenants or purchasers to the project, the expected or actual tenant and ownership mix of the project, any pro formas, and any other information provided to the city, and clearly marked in quotes 'trade secret,' as trade secrets and not as public records or information, and will not disclose such documents or information to any third party without the written consent of the developer," end quote. "The city will promptly notify the developer of (a) any public records request made to it that seeks disclosure of such documents or information, and (b) any court action filed against it to compel the disclosure of such documents or information." This section clearly attempts to place a gag order on all public documents associated with a developer using Sandusky City Schools and Sandusky taxpayer dollars. This section clearly makes a mockery of transparency in local government and should be stricken from the document. Sharon Johnson of 1139 Fifth Street in Sandusky said, "I am against giving the Cook Project a 30-year TIF at 100%, especially when the developer closes off public documents on the project. The developer benefits from taxpayer benefits and then turns around and shuts down public document requests classified under 'trade secrets,' which will have to be obtained through the courts." And then she asked, "I would like to read into record the following public document clause on page 14 of the developer's contract under confidentiality," which I did just read. She said, "If the clause remains, it will set precedence for other developers to close off public documents under trade secrets. I believe any possible conflicts of interest will go unchecked due to the lack of transparency. It is nothing short of public intimidation when a developer is demanding the city notify him of any request for public documents concerning his project."
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. Those questions, both the written ones and the verbal ones, our audience will be addressed as that legislation comes before us. We're fortunate tonight to be introducing three new police officers, and I'll ask our Assistant City Manager, John Orzak, and our Police Chief, Jared Oliver, to make those introductions with a brief presentation to us.
Thank you, President Brady and Commissioner. I just wanted to kind of give a public thank you to Connie Nicholson, who's our HR specialist. She's kind of been working short staff since last August, September, when we had an employee leave that department, so she's kind of been a one-man band. And Eva Alcott, the Administrative Assistant, Chief Oliver, and Diane Mulvaney, the Assistant Administrative Assistant to interim Chief Green, has pulled up the slack and been helping out quite a bit with all of the preparation to get to the point that we're at tonight. So I wanted to thank them publicly for all the behind-the-scenes work that they've been doing. The police testing started back in April and got certified in May, and so we're at this point. And then I also wanted to kind of give a brief on the fire department. Their testing has been concluded. They will get their civil service list certified on Thursday, and they have interviews scheduled for candidates starting next week and the week after. So there should be a quick turnaround once those interviews are completed to fill the remaining fire positions and have those firemen come and meet the commission within the next four to six weeks. So at that, I'll turn it over to Chief Oliver.
Well, I would just like to echo the Assistant City Manager's statements. I mean, this was my first, these are my first hires as a chief of police. I'm not really familiar with the civil service process. I come from the sheriff's office, and it's different at the county. Without the help of Connie Nicholson, our Administrative Assistant Eva Alcott, and honestly, the Assistant City Manager and the City Manager, the wealth of experience that they both had in the situation made my job a lot easier. So I appreciate everything everybody's done in leading to the success of our department. And with that, we have our three newest hires. You guys met them before the meeting, but I'll bring them up. Officer Jose Diaz. Come on up. If you would, introduce yourself to the commission.
Hi, my name's Jose Diaz. I currently reside in Lorraine County. Thankfully, City of Sandusky hired me in. I'm born and raised in Puerto Rico, so English is my second language. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. So welcome.
Officer John Dusa comes to us from the city of Higginham, Virginia Beach. PD.
Hello, I'm John Dusa. I grew up in Higginham, Ohio, graduated here in high school. After college, I went to the University of Toledo. I got my degree in criminal justice. I relocated to Virginia Beach. I worked as a police officer there for four years, and I wanted to come home, and I'm happy to start working for the city of Sandusky.
Very good. Welcome.
Officer Thomas Womack, military veteran of the United States Army.
Hello, I'm Thomas Womack. I originally am from Findlay, currently living in Perrysburg until my wife finishes up college. Like Chief said, I got out of the Army in 2018. I did five years, and I couldn't quite put away the uniform, so the opportunity.
Welcome. Welcome.
Well, thank you, guys, for coming in. We're very excited to welcome the citizens of Sandusky and look forward to the first person to career.
Mr. President?
Commissioner.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to again say welcome to our three new officers. We appreciate you wanting to come here to Sandusky to work. We hope that you have a long tenure here, and again, welcome.
We, by way of explanation, I think it's fair to say that we had to dispense with the formal swearing-in before the commission, which is always very impressive, and I always look forward to it. As a commissioner, we dispensed with that for these three officers because we felt it more important to get their boots on the ground. And by swearing them in privately and not waiting for a city commission meeting, we gained almost a month, or certainly close to a month, in their service. So that certainly is more important than the honor that we enjoy by having you sworn in front of us, but it is an impressive ceremony, whether it's in front of us or in front of you and your significant others also. So I want to add to Commissioner Twine's rhetoric, thank you for taking this job. Be safe out there. I thank employees all the time with almost the same phrase, and some of you may get tired of hearing, "Thank you for taking a chance on us," because that's what this is about. We're giving you, we think, a good job, but we know that you're taking a chance on us. So be safe out there, and you, like the rest of the department, both fire and police, will continue to make us proud. And the best news is, I don't expect any of you three to stick around for this next two-hour meeting.
Good to go.
You can slide out the door. Thank you.
See you as fast as.
Off they go.
Chief, you've got to stay. Next on our agenda is a presentation of the status of our justice, our future Justice Center. And I'm going to turn to both Aaron Klein and our Assistant City Manager, John Orzak, for that presentation.
Well, I'm up here to talk about where those three gentlemen will be living the next 20-some years. So I know this is something that we've been going through for a long time now, and we haven't been in front of you guys for probably about two, two and a half years. So I wanted to give you an update on the process that we've been going through since we were here last time, as we proceeded with the American Cran site and where we're looking to lead into. So what we started with was trying to figure out how to fit everything onto the American Cran site. And obviously, with Hayes Avenue, we had some elevation issues that we needed to deal with. We had railroad tracks on the north side as well. But more importantly, item number three on the screen that you can see is a gas main that just cannot be relocated. That was something that really limited the site. We had to keep the buildings to the north side, and it really made us take a look at what we could actually do on the site. We had to put parkings, and at that time, we were also looking at doing tennis courts, eight tennis courts out there. So we needed to keep those facilities over top of that gas main in case anything ever So we went through a design process of figuring out how to lay out the site best, where the court would go, where the police station would go, the tennis courts, the parking, and trying to make sure that we could have good flow throughout the property. And those were just a few examples, and this was the main one that we came up with as we were proceeding with the site. We wanted to have the police kind of on the northwest corner, and the court was going to be on the southeast corner. The tennis courts were going to be hugging the east side of the property, and the parking was going to be on the south. Some of the logistics that this created, some problems, were that we were going to have conflicts with the public parking, with the egress for the police, because we couldn't find a way to get the police to have a secondary access onto Hayes Avenue. Basically, we were going to have them going onto Rockwell, no matter what they could do. We could get two means of egress on this site, but we, anytime we had anything going on on Rockwell, it was going to interfere with the police response times. Another thing that we had to look at at this point was, knowing that we were going to have them on Rockwell, how do we manage the intersection at Hayes, knowing that it's difficult to see coming up that hill? We would have had to have added signals, preemption, a lot of other things at that location. So we started looking at that, going down the path of what the best routes were, how we were going to move forward with all those things. And we started laying out the building. You can see the reddish, pinkish, orangish colors of the court, the blue, purple, and gray colors. Well, the blue and purple are the police, and the gray are kind of the common areas. We went through a very detailed process of who needs to be where, which officers or what buildings needed, or offices needed to be by the Sally Port, for example, who needed to have direct access to the courtroom, for example. So we were going through this process, and we were eliminating and reducing the duplicate spaces, like common lunchrooms, common lobbies, those types of things. And what we realized was, given the footprint that we were looking at, we went through a long process of reducing the size of everybody's facility. The police, all those yellow arrows, this is one page from a 10-page document, those yellow arrows indicate areas that we eliminated something from the police department or the courts, where we reduced the size of an office and people were fitting two or three into an office space like we have now. And I remember sitting there, talking to the judge and talking to the police chief Orzak at the time, and they just had very uncomfortable, uneasy looks on their faces we're going through this and reducing what they needed. And to be honest, when we got down to it, we actually, as you can see the two highlighted sections up there, we had to reduce 16% less than what the needs analysis showed from 2016. So that analysis showed that we needed about 37,000 square feet of space inside the building, and the maximum that we could provide was 31,000. So we were dramatically reducing their space, and we could fit the tennis courts, but there was also discussions at the time about what other things can we have out there? Can we put a rec building? Can we put pickleball? Can we put a splash pad? What kind of things can we have on that site? And it was very obvious that we could not add anything. No room for expansion on that property. There were some safety concerns, obviously the conflicts at Hayes, but I think more importantly, some things that we were looking at were the conflicts that we had with the students when school let out, with those, as they're walking up there. If we do have tennis courts there, we're going to be drawing those students to the site, and they're going to be coming up Thomas, they're going to be coming up Hayes as well. And one of the things that we realized as we were going through this, we did some geotechnical analysis of the basements and the structural, the stability of the foundations and those types of things, and realized that the backfill material that was used during the demolition was not adequate to support the new structure. At the time when we demoed the building, we did not anticipate having a structure on site. The anticipation at that time was that the future developer, or, you know, we would have parking lots or rec facilities or things like that, tennis courts. So it actually added around $1 million to the site. That was the estimate from the architect, was that we were going to increase the cost dramatically because of the subsurface work that we would have had to have done. And I don't know if this last bullet on this line, that the city manager started getting some responses from the public, from the residents, from the businesses in that, on that south neighborhood, that they didn't really want the court and police to be at this location. So we can get more into that in a little bit. So what we decided was, we needed to take a step back and look at what we were doing. Were we doing the right thing for the community? We heard all those comments back. Is that what we wanted? And is that what needed to be at this site? So we started to reevaluate. We looked at things like, do the police and court even need to be together? Maybe we can put the police at the PNC site and the court somewhere else? And after those discussions with both, it was really a desire that they wanted to be together. It wasn't required, but it was something that they looked at the efficiencies, and it was going to be a lot better if they were. So then we looked at the American Cran site. What are we going to do there? What is the best use of that site, now that we know they need to be together? Should we put the police station and court at that location? And then we said, what were the top three of our previous site evaluation that we had done in our needs analysis? So we started looking into the PNC again, and that site was just not sized appropriately to handle the entire Justice Center. We went through a detailed analysis. That was everyone's top priority to begin with, and that was something that was just not going to happen. We needed like a three-story building, and that was not a good solution. So we asked Bowen to take a closer look at the old City Hall site. And they started doing some more analysis of that location. They realized when they were going through it that we had a 16% decrease in the size of the facility from the needs analysis at the American Cran site, but if we took into account the additional space in the old administration portion, they could actually get a 14% increase. So that's 30% more space that the police and court would be getting at that location. It also opened the American Cran site for recreation, and, you know, that, or whatever use, that south-side plan that's been discussed, you know, that can be involved with that. But then there were still issues that we wanted to resolve before we decided if this was something that we were going to recommend. So we knew that there were sewer and water problems out there with the utilities. There's still some asbestos abatement that's needed, on a Phase 1 that was done. And how do you still have the police and courts operational if you're going to be reconstructing in that building itself? Will it fit? What will it look like? How does the parking work? Can we still have enough space for other things around it? And most importantly, can we really do something with that building, with the structural stability, the foundations, the layout? Can we do anything and actually make it work? So we asked Bowen to take a quick look at that site again and do a little bit of a layout. This was very, very, very conceptual. This is, I promise you, this is not what it would look like in the end, but it's very conceptual, just to prove that it could fit. You can see a parking lot on the south side along Megs, or southwest side along Megs. You can see that we're only utilizing the parking lot closest to the building. They are expanding the parking lot on the north. There are a lot of things, a lot of questions that I have with this, but it is basically showing that we could reduce the footprint of this facility. So we actually, once we realized that, we asked Bowen to take a look at the building envelope. We know that, you know, we have concerns about that building. It's something that's been a concern since the early 2000s, when this process started years ago. And so they looked at the roof, they looked at the brick, the granite veneer, they looked at basically everything that was out there to see if they thought it could stand if they did some renovations to it. And they turned us an 11-page, 10-page, 11-page document, something like that, and they felt that with renovations, they could improve the roof, and the judge's chambers would no longer be leaking on his desk when he's sitting there. So they felt that it would handle the new Justice Center. So then we said, well, can you make it look better than what it looks like now? Because when you have salt and things growing on the walls and mold on the canopies, what can we do? So they got ahead of myself. So we did a layout. The next thing we did was a layout similar to what we did, stories, same thing, went through the whole process with them, got police, got court back involved. Can we make this work? You can see they're adding corridors, they're thinking through the process. Again, this is very preliminary, very conceptual at this time. We'll take that next step to finalize that. And then we said, can we make it look nice? And we asked them to do a couple renderings of what it could possibly look like. Now, again, these renderings are very conceptual. It won't look like this in the end, but you can see, this is from the parking lot, on the existing parking lot, and this one is the inside lobby. So we realized that we could make the building look nicer, that it would work for a Justice Center with capacity, with flow, with efficiency. The structure was going to withstand if we did some repairs to it. And then we got into the cost and the timeline. So that's where this came in. So the American Cran site is that number highlighted in yellow on the top left, and the estimate from the architect was about $352 per square foot for new construction. The estimate for renovating the existing old City Hall building was about $242 per square foot. Now, what I can say is that they had a 3.5% escalator on that cost. That 3.5% escalator is something that they add per year, just so you know, like if you bid it next year, it's going to go up 3.5%. That number is significantly higher post-COVID than it was last year at this time, or two years ago at this time. However, it is also higher for new construction because the things that you're paying for, a lot of the areas that we're struggling with those increased costs. a lot of the areas that we're struggling with those increased costs are those structural members, the steel, the, you know, all those things that are going in to hold the building up. We don't have those in the new, in the existing facility. We would have those in a new Justice Center, new construction. So looking at this, that 3.5% escalator could be four, five, six for reconstructing the new, or the existing facility now. It could be 2, 3, 4, 5% higher than that for new construction. So going through this, looking at the American Cran site, I have the schedule up there. It will take a little bit longer to do a phased construction at the existing location. Obviously, you want to keep operational. They did have a factor in there for that, a cost in there for it, and they extended the timeline a little bit. But, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing, given the fact that, you know, we want to time the bidding of something perfectly with when the construction costs are going to come down. If we can save $1 million by waiting a month or two to bid the contract, then we'll obviously do that. So, so looking through all of the items that we were questioning previously, it does resolve the space issue. The, we can find space now for tennis courts and pickleball and a rec center and whatever we want to do with the American Cran site, we can also have a Justice Center. So we can, we have more flexibility with what we can use both sites for, rather than limiting us to everything on one site. The parking concerns, right now, they have 176 requested for staff, that's for shift changes and things like that. I think that can be dramatically reduced. We also have parking going in on Megs, on street parking on the project that we're starting next year. The utility concerns, we have a cost in there to bust out all of the sanitary and storm and water lines. And also, as we're doing Megs, we have a cost in there to extend that to the property lines so that we can improve those next year. So we'll be incorporating that into that project. The safety concerns, the biggest concern at this, at the Old City Hall site is the presence of the Sandusky Bay pathway. It's definitely not as big of a concern as having a school let out right on that same path during those busy hours, and youth traveling to those sporting events if they're no longer at that site. We don't have the limitations of the gas main, and the additional costs were significantly less than the subsurface costs at the American Cran site. So with that, you know, I think the, what the staff is recommending is that we take a step back from the recommendation and the motion that was made back in 2018. And at that time, it was seven to zero to choose the American Cran site, but in discussions with the site selection committee, including the judge who couldn't be here tonight, that I think it was that they definitely preferred to reevaluate and move over to the existing City Hall location with this. So I've talked to the consultant, and they told me that if there's a motion that we move forward tonight with either location, that they can get us a contract back for design within the month. So with that, I don't have anything else, and I can answer some questions.
Commissioner's questions, comments, or Mr. Klein or the selection committee?
Mr. Klein.
Murray.
I wanted to say how thorough your presentation was. I think at the end of the, the bottom line for me is that there'd be 30% more space available, and it would be at a reduced cost, and that makes sense. I originally liked the proposal to be at the American Cran site, but as we've gone through the process, and there's, this is the process, you went through a space planning process, and we spent money on that, but now we know what our needs are, so that's not lost money, and the money that will, in the main, really contribute to an improved outcome at a different site, if that's what we choose to do. So I'm persuaded, and I think also the other, the other thing was that, in the process of talking about the American Cran site and thinking about it as a community, we ultimately came to a different conclusion. And the conclusion was that, well, that was better reserved for recreation and children in particular. So I will be willing to make that motion, if it's okay to make that now, Mr. Chairman, to, I guess, accept the staff's recommendation that we move forward with studying a relocation of the, redevelopment, I should say, of the Justice Center at the existing facility on Mc Street.
I think it's appropriate to make that motion. We can have discussion, we can have discussion once that motion is made. Have a motion to accept the concept of investigating, reinvestigating the site of the existing site, is that correct, Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'd second that.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Minzer.
I got a, this is like, I think I got sticker shock. I saw $12 million and pickleball. I thought pickleball, maybe tourists, boaters, elderly, I can't see pickleball going out on Haysab. There's so many parts, or moving parts right now, that I can't comprehend or wrap my head around at all. And to make a, I'm not against it. I have to think, maybe I overthought things, but I thought, when we moved out of the city building, that we were going to develop that into some commercial entity, maybe Cedar Point, or maybe a hotel, or some, some sort of commerce. I thought that that's a beautiful place to develop down there, Battery Park, and leave some site lanes and leave public access. But I, in my mind, I thought, even when I ran for commission, that that was going to be developed. And we're kind of going back to, but prior to me getting on, I, the discussion was to move everything, just, and we, and I wasn't privileged to all those discussions. So that's, that's just my two cents right now, is kind of like, I'm surprised, I should say.
Additional discussion, Commissioner?
I have a question.
Mr. Poole.
Yeah. Mr. Klein, there was a full set of plans drawn up for that building, the old building, for the court's expansion. It sounds like we've, have you incorporated those into this, and are we paying to do it completely over again? There's a set of plans that showed the court expanding to the west, out into the front, or it could have been expanded to the north on the parking lot. How's that fit into this? We start there.
Through, through the President, I am aware of that. I believe that was back in the '03, '06 timeframe, maybe '08, something like that. Those, I don't think it was a full set of design for construction plans. It was more conceptual, and they did, they did go farther than what we did, but we have looked at that. We have given that to Bowen, they incorporated that into their renderings, and they're going to, once we get them under contract, if this is the site, we're going to make sure that they're looking at those as they proceed with the design, because, I mean, if we've already done part of the work, I don't want to just throw it by the wayside.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Additionally, we, the police department is already there, and the court is already there. I don't understand why it, and they're functioning. What exactly are you changing, or adding, or improving to the service they provide to the community, that we had to invest $12 million into this? At the point in time back in the day when this started, we were dealing with a leaky roof, and it's amazing that it took five years for you to come to the conclusion that we could fix the leaking roof. So the police department needed additional space for storage of evidence. I think they had a, an issue dealing with what to do with a prisoner that they held onto for a short time before they took him, took them to the police department, out to the sheriff's department, recognize that. But beyond that, and I reckon, I can see that they're cramped a little bit for space, but with regard to the detective bureau, and it would be nice to have some nicer rooms for them to do interviews. I recognize those things need to be done. I'm not saying with the size of that empty building now, that it should be $12 million. So I think this leads up to, I would like to see what you're changing here and some justification that says we need to do all of this. I looked at that pretty building that you built, and quite frankly, the, what the court does with, in terms of getting traffic fines and so forth, I'm not sure, I'm prepared to ask the taxpayers to spend $12 million to make it look like the Guggenheim in New York or something. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense. It needs to be functional and meet the needs of the court, but there seems to be a lot of space there. So if you just touch on that, because that's my belief, and if I'm out, if I'm missing something, fill me in. I recognize the court needs more space, but it looks, the building looks pretty empty since we left.
Yeah, through the-
With two floors.
Commissioner President, Mr. Commissioner Poole, before I turn it over to Assistant City Manager, and the city manager, I did pull the layout back up on the screen, and you can see that right now, the police and court do not utilize, to the full extent, that old administration portion, which is on the top of the screen there.
Need to enlarge this. This is impossible to make any sense of.
Wish I had an IT guy here. He's on his way.
Is this existing, or what you folks are planning on doing is what's needed in the future? Is that what we're looking at?
This is the site, this, through the Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole. This is the proposed re-layout of the space.
This is a new layout.
Yeah, so this is the, just the footprint of the existing building with very limited additional expansion up here on the Mc Street end. And again, this is just one floor. They looked at both stories and, and sat down with the, with Assistant City Manager Orzek, and went through this process, and this is the police piece here, and up in this area. And then they had the entire second floor as well. The court's expanded over to this area, and then across the hall into here. So it is kind of moving and restructuring and laying people out so that it is more efficient. But as far as the exact needs of the police department and what, how this improvement is made, I'd have to defer to Chief Oliver or Assistant City Manager Orzek. Just real quick, that 12.5 million, that number, when I went through the previous needs analysis again, they hadn't included any of the design in there, they hadn't included any of the inspection, and they hadn't included any of the furniture and fixtures and wall hangings and those types of things in that. So I wanted, I told them I wanted an all-in number. I don't want surprises in the end where I've got $2 million, $3 million, $4 million on top of that. So the numbers that I showed include all of those things, or budgetary numbers for all of those things. So the construction of this is significantly less. So when we, when I was looking at those numbers that we were evaluating on that needs analysis previously, we're actually at the low end of that needs analysis and of those numbers that we had looked at. But with those soft costs included, the number is at the top end of that needs, at this site. If you're looking at the American Cran site, we are over $1 million past the top level of that needs analysis. I don't know if you guys want to speak to the efficiency and-
Excuse me, let me help direct you to what I meant. You can say anything you want after this, but what I'm interested in is discussing this in terms of what you have now. What this, what specifically is going to do, is going to change, and so that I can get an idea whether or not the value added to the service you provide is worth the amount of money that we're talking, talking about. Building a building that every department head would love to have, you know, is like turning your kid loose in the, you know, the Lululemon store, if it's a 17-year-old girl, and telling her, get anything you want. And so I'm really looking for some down-to-earth, we don't, we have many, many things to spend our money on, and just need to hear, you don't have to have bare bones and need, just, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, sir.
In addition to anything else you want to say.
Sure. The Assistant City Manager, the, obviously, our former retired police chief, was a, started this process from the beginning, so I'll defer to him first, but then I can give you a couple specific examples that has occurred recently.
Through the Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole. I think the, you hit kind of the nail on the head as far as the storage and all that with the evidence is, one of the main things that I had kind of been focused on when we were doing reductions on the American Cran site, we're past capacity right now. And the evidence has to be stored for 20 years on DNA and that. So the evidence storage is one. The ventilation system and the plumbing and all of that inside the facility is very bad. If you come down and look at the facility, you can see the way the bathrooms are for the employees and, you know, the buildings definitely needs fixed up at some point. But the ventilation system is atrocious. You know, the chief's office is right next to the evidence, and all you smell is marijuana all day long. You know, through that filtration system, it's very bad. The roof, I was concerned about, and the way they explained it, was some type of membrane or something like that, and I don't, I don't know any engineering stuff, but the membrane was, so making sure that we can have that sealed up and, you know, that it isn't leaking and things like that. But I think the biggest thing that efficiencies are, you know, we kind of have people piecemealed all over the facility right now. We expanded some of our offices over into the old law department, and this gives an opportunity to move, move pretty much the whole operation into one location. But the plumbing, the electrical, the boiler systems, definitely going to have to be replaced. You guys did an emergency a year or two ago, and those costs are going to continue to come back to you at some point. So those are some of the things that I think that we need to make a determination. I don't know what the cost would be, but the, definitely the plumbing and infiltrate, you know, the heating and, and the filtration system itself has to be fixed. We can't have, you know, employees with, there's mold in there, there's all kinds of significant issues that I think, as stewards, we looked at trying to make sure we get the best bang for the buck for the citizens, and so that's kind of the, I defer to you.
I'll, through the Commissioner President, piggyback off of that a little bit with the mold and the ventilation. It, it is, it's terrible. That type of stuff happens. I mean, that's a daily occurrence. But when you were talking about space, Commissioner Poole, we recently had a couple different things happen where we've had to bring a lot of people to our department, suspects to interview, along with family members of, you know, victims. Couple of weeks ago, we ran out of room. We didn't have any place to put anybody. It's not going to happen all the time, but this did just happen. So we ran completely out of room where we needed to have people sort of wait for our detectives to show up. We didn't have enough interview rooms, we didn't have enough rooms downstairs. The lobby area becomes, it's public access, becomes very, very congested. Family members of one of the victims walks through when we have people there that we're trying to isolate to get to other areas. It was, it was very tough. This is just one of those things that happen in old buildings. I mean, it's nothing you can prepare for, but the more space, bigger conference rooms, with what the Assistant City Manager said with some of our officers where they're stationed, our CIO office is in a completely different part of the building, they're sort of out there on an island, so you got to sort of track everybody back down just to make sure we all know where everybody's going. It's a security nightmare with sort of situations like that. It really is. And we'll deal with it. I mean, obviously, we're always going to work with what we have. We're always going to provide the best service we possibly can. It was an issue a couple weeks ago, and that will happen again. It's just where we're at right now.
Mr. Klein, our, our reason for moving to this location was because that building had bad bones. It still has bad bones, but I think what you're telling us is, relieving that facility of the square footage that we're occupying here, makes those bones able to be repaired at a lesser cost than building brand-new at American Cran. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
You gave us an awful lot of reasons why those numbers move some up and some down. Would you say that probably the eminent reason for them moving is, has a great deal to do with the high cost of building brand-new compared to renovation, with the skyrocketing cost that all of us are seeing, whether we're renovating a bathroom in our home or building a Justice Center?
Yes. We- Yes, we've seen that on several of our projects. And I keep hearing from other communities that they wish they had bid out their construction resurfacing project when we did because their costs are just going way up as well. So, you know, that foresight to think through those things. And hopefully next year, I'm here in 12 months, 15 months. The hope is that they come down. That's right around the time when we would bid this. So I'm really hoping that we can, you know. And because of those costs, a lot of them would be transferred to a new construction. I'm not saying that the HVAC systems and the computer systems and those types of things, those costs are up there as well. Those are duplicate costs. No matter which location you pick, you're getting that same increase. This location, you're having less increase because you have that structure already there that we can fix.
Not digging footers.
Mr. Chairman. What about the courts? They were a big part of the decision for the American Crayon site. They felt like that they needed a new structure. They were also looking for everything on the first floor, on one floor. So I'd like to get a little bit of feedback as to what- I don't see anybody from the courts here tonight. So can somebody provide some feedback as to what their comments were, what their concerns are?
Yes. Commissioner President to Commissioner Twine. I have had constant communication with Kim from the courts. We did invite her and the judge tonight, and they chose not to come. But they do support the renovation at the current location. They have been with us with Bowen all the steps of the way. They have seen all of the programs and what they're putting in place for the courts. And they're satisfied that that'll address a lot of their concerns. So they are in support of the renovation at this location.
And if I could really just briefly, through the Commissioner President to Commissioner Twine, as to the courts, but it also, I think, begins to answer a comment that Commissioner Poole made. Commissioner Poole stated that the taxpayers would be responsible for the 12 to 13 million. It's going to be really clear that this project is approximately, what, 50%?
Court? Forty.
Forty percent court. So of that 40%, that would actually not be taxpayer funded. That would be funded by the court itself, which is not funded through taxpayer dollars, but is funded by the rates, the revenue that the court raises throughout the course of the year. And I was very, I thought the courts were going to have more questions. But when we did go to sit down with them the first time in this and then since, they've been very open to this concept, I think, efficiency of cost based on everyone's concern and their budgets been impacted by COVID as well as ours. And just the ability to make a decision and move forward were the big things that I heard from the court and his clerk as to going forward. And then just really briefly to get at Mike's question as to the site and the other potential uses of the site. I do think it's important that we took a long and hard look at that. We've obviously done a lot of master planning in this area. And it's important to note that the amount of land actually taken up by this project will shrink pretty dramatically. And that Battery Park site is a really big site when you look at it. It would take decades of development to fill that whole site. And we're just as committed to the public access and the public uses that are there. And this is going to be an attractive new building that is going to operate predominantly eight to five Monday through Friday. And there's going to be a lot of land left over for green space and recreation and potentially appropriate development. And so we're not concerned about the overall viability, the redevelopment of the site. We think particularly that entire northern section of the parking lot will not be a part of this. It'll just be the closer section. And then we think there's some land to the east that will also not be needed for this. And Aaron's going to continue to look at tightening up that site. So we feel really good that Battery Park is still a great site for whatever the commission decides to do with it, even with this staying in the small corner of the overall footprint.
Mr. Orzek, we've been great partners with our school system for decades. Their voice is heard in here somewhere also, is it not? Are they, I take it, and I presume by reading this, that they are in favor of not having a justice center that close to the school?
I would defer to Mr. Webster on that. He's had communication with the schools more than I have. But I guess my biggest concern that I've brought up to Aaron probably more times than not is the concern of us going out on Hayes Avenue with kids walking by and a bunch of kids walking by and us having an accident with those children plays in my mind. And I've talked to Commissioner Twine. And I also want to thank her for her being involved in the process with the selection. We spent many, many hours trying to find a site in Sandusky that would accommodate all of this. And so I'll defer to Mr. Webster on that question.
Thanks, Assistant City Manager Orzek. Through Commissioner President Brady, I have had conversations with the schools on this. And they have reiterated on more than one occasion that they think this site is much better for community-based recreation-type activities. And we know we've heard from both Sandusky residents and the schools over a period of years is their desire for a community center, a rec center within Sandusky. So one of the factors was, is there a footprint that works for that within the city, under the city's control? And this is probably the best one, particularly in proximity to the new three-through-six school, as well as the existing middle and high schools there, to create that proximity. And particularly as they look at building a community pool at the high school, there could be synergies between those two facilities. It's a walkable connection between those two at this site. And then we've had also long conversations with the schools about partnering on a tennis courts project potentially. They have some other uses in mind for their current tennis courts for their own athletic campus. And so if we're able to come together on that and make this land available for that, that provides some synergies between their athletic campuses, most of which are at or near the high school or across Hayes Avenue from the high school and this site. So I do think that they're very- Both the community residents that we've spoken with, as well as the school officials that we've spoken with, have demonstrated that they believe this site is best used for recreation. And I think, you know, not to speak for the hospital, but I have had conversations with Jeremy Normington-Slay, the CEO of Firelands. And he is very excited about the potential of recreational uses at the site, both for the revitalization of the corridor, which they also call home, but also for the direct proximity to those uses for their 1,000-plus employees that work on their main campus.
Additional comments or questions? Commissioner Twine.
I certainly agree with relocating from the American Crayon site. As Orzek said, we've had many conversations about possible congestion in that area, children walking back and forth and things like that. So I agree that the American Crayon site is probably not the best site for the justice center. And frankly, I'm not totally sold that the current Meg Street building is the proper place also for the justice center. I am conflicted about that decision because I feel like that I really don't have enough information that's been provided tonight to make a determination as to whether the Meg Street renovations of that building would be cost-effective, efficient. And then a few years later, after it's all done, will, you know, will the courts or the police department need more space? Are they going to be landlocked in that area if we're still talking about other development in that area? So those are some of my concerns about leaving it where it was at on Meg Street. So, but again, I support moving it away from the American Crayon site. I'm just not so sure the Meg Street site is the appropriate site.
Additional questions, comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman. Getting our bite of the apple. So I feel a little better after having the discussion. One, I absolutely believe the police department needs a new building because the detective bureau and that lobby is just atrocious. I don't know how the detectives even get any work done in that place. So, two, I've never been against the police department being down there or even the city building renovating it. That's not a bad site. The one reservation I had was development, and Mr. Webster answered that. There's still room to develop a property down there. The only thing left with me that I'm concerned is the sticker shock. And I think that, so it's down to $6 million out of city taxpayers approximately if the courts kick in.
I think I'm, through the Commissioner President, Commissioner, I think it's a little higher than that with 40% of 12 million. But it is reduced from the 12 million.
I was a fireman.
I don't think either. I was for math majors.
So I feel a little better. But that said, so I wouldn't mind having more discussion about this. So that's where I'm at, I guess.
Mr. Twine, fair to say that what we've lost in where we've gone and where we've been is just time? Because you have developed spatial needs that certainly will be beneficial trying or implying them or applying them to the new location. So we've lost a year, maybe a year and a half. But that's all we've lost.
Mr. President, that's what we've lost. But honestly, when we were going through this process, we were going to have the design at the American Crayon site ready to bid around the beginning of 2020. So if we had gone down that road and designed it at that site, we would have been bidding it right at the start of the pandemic or we would have just thrown them on the shelf at that time. So, yeah, we only lost the time, but we've also gained the knowledge and the understanding of what the climate is that we're in right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
All that knowledge and stuff that you've gained over the last, what, three years, whatever, that didn't cost anything, where'd you get it? This new knowledge and understanding of why American Crayon wasn't a good place to go. I want to say I was never in favor of moving out of this building to begin with. But that's over and done with. I'm trying to figure out, how did we manage to go three years and spend no money whatsoever on researching or whatever to have all this new revelation?
Through the-
How much did it cost for you to learn all this?
Through the Commissioner President, we had a contract with Bowen to do a conceptual site plan and do that analysis and go through that process at the American Crayon site. A lot of that work, probably 90, 95% of that work, was work to try to figure out the flow inside the building. Regardless of the building, was the flow of the building, the site, the evaluation of those things. 90, 95% of that translates to wherever you put it. It's that geotechnical information that when we bore down and realized that we would have had another $1 million and that there's a gas line that runs through the site and really almost bisects that site and those limitations, that's what we've gained. That project, I think we had them under contract. I can't remember the exact cost, but it was somewhere in the $95,000 range. And like I said, the majority of that money was money that we would have needed to have spent whether we chose the American Crayon site or the Old City Hall site anyway.
Okay, which is fine. I just wanted to make the point, we do have money invested in this. And to point out that many folks didn't want to go there to begin with. And just so you know, I was never and still not in favor of moving any recreational facilities to that site. The trains go by there every 12 minutes. It's dangerous for kids to be there. It's not going to be enjoyable to be there to play because whenever the train comes by, if you live on the tracks, you know this, you turn up your television.
Hey, we're not going there.
Yeah, just, yeah. Just this is not a good idea. And I prefer, just on the record now, this is a bad idea, just as it was a bad idea to try and put the police department out there. And the folks on the south side were not in favor of it to begin with. It's nice that we came around the circle and got back there, but we wasted a whole lot of time. And now we're doing what we should have started with. I'm not certain that I want to spend $12 million. I don't. What you presented here sounds nice, but we took your word that it was a great idea to go to, out to American Crayon and just voted yes and invested $95,000 in a drawing. And so I'm not sure I'm going to vote yes for this or not, just as-
Additional questions? We have a motion and a second on the table. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll?
Yes, President Brady. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes, we have to do something.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion is passed. And I believe you have your marching orders, Mr. Twine. Thank you for your presentation, very thorough.
Sir.
Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
Still move.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Thought objection, that motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, that motion is approved. We have two consent items to consider this evening. Do any of you commissioners wish to move those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Briggs, will you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, President Brady. Coming up on your screen is tonight's consent agenda, beginning with item A. It is a pier, track pump station and farwell pump station improvement project, change order number one and final, and it is a deduction. And item B is a liquor permit transfer to Sandusky salvage center.
Having heard these ordinances on liquor permit, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move to accept the consent agenda items A and B and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Briggs, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and liquor permit, hearing.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance and our notice to the Division of Liquor Control that we do not request a hearing are approved. We will now turn to our regular agenda. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number one, please?
Item number one is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a revocable license agreement with Scooter Ding Ding LLC of Sandusky, Ohio for the use of public space for a scooter rental business and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, have you heard the ordinance? How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meinzler.
I move to adopt this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14.
Second.
Then a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Just describe where the scooter locations are going to be that we're getting $50 a pop for.
I'm going to say that-
How many are there and where are they going to be?
I am not equipped to answer that question, but I am thinking that Mr. Wright, is Mr. Wright in the audience?
Yes.
Mr. Wright, if you're prepared, I wonder if you'd step to the microphone and provide that answer for Commissioner Poole. I was hoping you were out there.
Yes, thanks. My name's Kyle Wright. And so the idea is to have some signage at various bike locations, bike racks downtown. The bike racks that are currently there, that are just affixed to the sidewalk, we would just put some signage there so that people would know that this is where you can pick up, rent a scooter and drop it off.
Does that mean you don't know how many you're going to?
How many, so-
That was the question, how many?
How many total?
Yes, and where will they be?
My understanding is, was there an actual number? We didn't have an actual number in mind. But it was my understanding it would be $50 per location, just whichever, I mean, realistically, we're glad to work with council on what specific locations you'd like to signage. But ideally, I would, a few down the shoreline and then probably up Columbus, maybe one or two. So I would say five total.
Okay.
Mr. Wright, my understanding is that your recharging location is located in the ground floor of Boomtown Coffee. So ultimately, the scooter's got to get back to there to get charged up. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And all the while they're out, they're getting charged. So that is the motivation for your renters, get that scooter back eventually.
Correct.
Good motivation. I like it.
Chairman, one more question. What's the top speed on that scooter?
So-
Currently, what have they been up to now?
Currently, so the top speed on the scooters is 18.9 miles per hour. We've brought it down, we've governed it down to under 15. It's like 14.8. Currently, so, the top speed on the scooters is eighteen point nine miles per hour. We've, we've brought it down, we've governed it down to under fifteen, it's like fourteen point eight.
Really briefly, through the Commission President, Chief Oliver, they actually tested the scooters to see how fast they could top them out at?
Yes, sir, we have. We topped a scooter out at thirteen miles an hour.
Thirteen miles an hour, great. Commissioner Murray?
One of the points I'd like to make is a lot of communities, you see these scattered all over the place, and it's really not a really, a good setup, and I really like the contract that this is coming to us, because, you know, the scooters do need to be returned to where the folks rented them from. So instead of lying in the middle of sidewalks and sides of buildings all over town, they'll, they'll be brought back there, so I think it's a much better approach.
Sure, yeah, and, and that, that was our idea. There's the dockless model that you see in the big cities, we wanted to do a dock model. Number one, it's, it's, it's cleaner, it's more efficient for us, and, you know, it's cheaper to insure. We looked at a dockless models, you know, it was like twenty thousand dollars minimum to insure, and this is just, this is just a better model for us. Logistically picking them up, retrieving them is much easier, and there's a lot of traffic right down by Shoreline right now, it's amazing, people are going down there all the time. We frankly, we can't meet the, the demand right now. We have to do a morning, we split them up, so that you have scooters in the, in the morning, and then in the afternoon, if we put them all out in the morning, by five o'clock PM, ninety percent of them are dead, and people are contacting my wife, you know, upset that they can't take the scooters out, so.
Additional questions, Commissioners?
One more question, this, I suppose, for staff, just to clear up confusion, you're using the bike racks that are existing somehow? Where are we parked, this is for staff, where are we parking bicycles?
Through the Commission President, Commissioner Poehl, and Director Klein, if you want to jump in this, please go ahead, but we're very careful to make sure that whatever allocation of scooters we have that wouldn't fully occupy any bike rack or set of bike racks, and then if we have to add any additional bike racks in the future, we would look to the company to potentially offset our cost of doing that, if we're still dedicating it. But Aaron, if you want to speak to that, I know we looked carefully to make sure that any place they were putting a speaker, there was still plenty of space for at least a few bikes in that location.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, that's fine, sounds nice. Not sure whether it needs to be in the, in this or not, because it's not, it's not written in here. If fifty dollars a spot, if we have to buy bike racks, I'd be more comfortable knowing that we're either going to raise the price to buy, buy the bike racks, and he's going to do, you know, you understand? We can't give up the bike racks for fifty bucks, and then have to go buy new bike racks. I know it's in our intent, but I want to be sure what we're passing, that we're going to be okay, that's all.
Through the Commission President, this is a one-year pilot deal, that is always intended, so on a year-to-year basis, we will look at what costs we took on last year, what additional costs we may take on next year, and so if, for example, with a rush of new bicycle parking downtown, and the popularity of the scooters, we determined we needed to add more bike racks, we would look to incorporating those costs, or come to some other arrangement in next year's agreement.
Perfect, thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Wright. You're welcome. Ms. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number two, please?
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a commercial license agreement for structured access with the Ohio Bell Telephone Company Doing Business as AT&amp;T Ohio, for the placement of decorative banners along Venice Road for the Sandusky Bay Parkway, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, I, I recall that we had a audience question regarding why the two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars could not be incorporated into the four-plus million dollars we're paying Spear Brothers. I don't know if there's a good answer for that, if there's even an answer for it, but I'll allow you to speak to that.
Well, Mr. President, yes, we, we were unaware that we needed to seek their permission. We were under the impression that these were Ohio Edison poles at the time that we bid the contract, and honestly, it worked out in our favor, because typically what would have happened was the contractor would have marked it out, so we were able to deal directly with AT&amp;T, and we're going to be able to do that and use this model on future contracts when we have their poles involved, where the bike path runs by it. We probably could have put it into the contract, we can consider that in the future, but it would definitely be something that the contractor would add their ten percent on top of, and I just don't want to do that.
And, Mr. Klein, you and I had this discussion earlier, but I would like you to at least speak to it. We have offset a great deal of, of what could have been potential cost of leasing poles by installing these on our own, on like, on our own light pole structure, is that not correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we, as you see on Shoreline Drive, there are some existing poles that the city owns, so we were able to put those banners on those, but the poles on Venice Road, we don't own those, so we had to seek that permission. The other option would have been to make sure that we stayed with the branding and the design of the bike path, and had everything look the same from east to west as we proceed with this project. The only other thing that we could have done would have been to purchase poles, install foundations, and then put those poles up just to hang these banners, so those capital costs and those long-term maintenance costs, if the pole gets hit and damaged or anything else, we've saved, we actually will save quite a bit by doing it this way.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number three, please?
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a five-year license agreement with Creative Outdoor Advertising of America Incorporated of Tampa, Florida, for the downtown recycling program, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meizer.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Mr. Poehl. Been a motion and a second discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
This is a tough one for me. I, I've never really liked the billboard advertisements, and I am not so convinced that much is being recycled these days. In fact, I think we're paying for a whole lot of money at recycling centers, and I, my suspicion, perhaps cynicism, is that most of that's going into a landfill, anyway. So, but I, I know there was a suggestion that we should ask local haulers to, to, to bid on our own additional waste receptacles and perhaps recycling, they declined.
That's correct.
Mr. Klein informed me of that, so we have basically two choices, and I'm not really happy about either one.
I agree, the recycling industry is in chaos, and that all happened, I believe, in 2018. Don't know that it's ever going to come back. I, I, I am torn also on this piece of legislation. I feel like giving up on it, though, for fifteen thousand dollars is giving up on, on the small piece of recycling that, that I guess in my heart I want to believe is happening, at least in our downtown. Is that meaningful, or is that meaningless? Tough question. Mr. Meizer, do you have a question?
No, yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, I wanted to bring it to the table, but I wanted a discussion. One of, one of my concerns with DORA was the plastic cup litter, is all, that's, is this going to help me mitigate some of that problem? Is that the intent, or is it just?
Certainly, there's certainly thirty more places to throw cups away.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking, like, I'm worried about somebody having to walk around every morning and pick up plastic cups all over downtown, and a city employee, that's, you know, significant wages and benefits to, to do that. Hopefully, hopefully it works out.
I can-
I don't know, I just-
Mr. Klein and I had a, had a discussion regarding this earlier today, and I think we can both tell you that if, if you don't like this number, you sure are not going to like the next one you're going to see for a recycling center out, out of, out of facilities, because what we're now paying fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year for, if this commission is committed to maintaining that, you're probably going to be paying double.
Really?
So this is kind of a-
That'll work.
This is kind of a test for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
With regard to these bins, the alternative is to do, what, thirty cans that go to the dump? For how much?
The alternative is to not sign a contract with this company and have them removed.
Have what, well, the point is, the trash is going to be there. I mean, we, the point is, what's the difference? I'm prepared, yes, for fifteen thousand dollars to support this, because it's not going to be significantly less taking it to the dump.
I agree.
It's not, it's, we're not saving any money, and the least we can do is, is try and encourage people to put their DORA cups in a, one of these, call it a DORA bin, might be the best thing to do, attract people to go get, to, to utilize it, honestly, and, and give us an opportunity to, if people, people be attracted to designated bins, so, anyway, I support this.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
Mr. Poehl and Mr. Meizer make good points, that we still have to get rid of the trash, this isn't just recycling.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Additional questions, comments, Commissioners? Ms. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number four, please?
Item number four is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed vault structure at Big Island Water Works Project, updating the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive goods in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with, with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, this is, this takes a very brief discussion to explain what this is, because I think it's pretty simple, but it's awfully important to the valve that's nineteen feet down to the ground, I wonder if you'd share with us what we're doing here?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we have a valve at the water plant that is currently not operating. It's open, but we don't know if it's fully open or partially open, and it's on our forty-two inch intake line, so what we, we don't have access to it. When they constructed it, they buried it completely, and we can't investigate and figure out what's wrong, so this project, right now, is to install a vault to go down and do the inspection. We had contemplated whether we include the cost to actually do the repair, but because we have no idea what the repair is, the contractor will just throw some big number at it to cover themselves, so what we're looking at tonight is a cost to bid the installation of this vault, so that we can have crews go down and see if, if, if we can fix it, or if we need to do some other work and hire another contractor to do additional work, so we need to move forward with it, so we have that flexibility at the plant. If it is open and we have a problem in the bay in our intake or something like that, we have no flexibility right now, it stays open all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
Just a comment that I, I'd support this, anytime we're spending money on, on structure, on capital improvements that are going to be of value to us for a very long period of time, we should, we should do that. Seen places who have not kept up with their various parts of their, their water systems in places like Flint and so forth, which is really gross what happened there, but the fact is, this is a, appears to be well-invested money, that we'll be glad we did for a long time. Can I ask, how long is this, this, this vault will be, will be good and of value to us for how, for how many years? Forever?
Through the Commission President, I, usually you put, if I were to bid something like this out, I'd put a fifty to seventy-five to a hundred-year lifespan on it.
Thank you, and that's my point. Need this.
Ms. Briggs, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wadding?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meizer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, will you present item number five, please?
Item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for special event producer for the summer concert series at the Jackson Street Pier, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harris.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Just want to make a quick comment. I have to say that I was, actually had the pleasure of joining a few other individuals, just as, like a think, or brainstorming session, you know, and just, you know, we had the opportunity to share our thoughts on what it is that we would like to see, and without diving too much into that, I just thought it was very, I walked away very encouraged, just to know that we certainly are making it a point to have entertainment that is geared towards, really just being inclusive of everyone throughout the community. So, again, I think this is going to be a great look, and I look forward to, to, you know, seeing this concert series and welcoming folks from all over the community down to the pier, so.
Mr. Briggs, I know that you have a brief presentation of where this money's going, how it's being spent. If you'd share that with us, make it much easier for us to vote on this.
Yes, President Brady. Up on your screen is, and I know it's been a long meeting already, so I will try to be extremely brief, but just a quick four-slide presentation. We're really excited to do this pilot program in 2021 and see how it goes. To provide a little bit of context, a programming fund was passed in 2018 that designated funds ten percent of the lodging tax. So, that means hotels and Airbnbs to go towards a programming fund. Those dollars can only be used towards programming. And then, in the recent meetings, mostly in March, we passed numerous pieces of legislation which got us amenities to help with programming. What you see in front of you is the Erie County Community Foundation stage that will be used for all of these concerts, both the Lang Trust concerts and the city's concerts, as well as some other things going on. And then, at the last meeting, we accepted a handful of sponsorship dollars to help leverage the city's programming dollars. So, I would like to just give a quick shout out to the Lang Trust, who brought forward fifty thousand dollars, and they are putting on four events. Naturally, seven is an acapella group, the Great Debras Circus, the Hitmen are performers from The Styx and Foreigner that have gotten together and have formed their own, you know, band that does those songs. And then, the Williamsburg Salsa Orchestra is just that, a salsa group. So, we were really excited to partner with them on this. And the goal of the city's concert series is basically to activate Thursday nights and to make that feel like a weekend night, so that we can create fun programming for people of all ages and throughout our entire community. We also want to better support our businesses on weeknights, especially since they have rough 2020. And then, alluding to Commissioner Harris's comments, we did get input rather quickly. As soon as we knew that summer concerts and events could be a go, we started asking what type of things people wanted to see. And we got together with our Community Relations Commission, and they produced, you know, some really great ideas for us that they didn't want this just to be country and rock and roll, but in addition to that, and those party bands having reggae and Motown, and perhaps a DJ that might call to our younger twenty-somethings and teensomethings. So, we really hope that this can build community in a really different way and invite people, so that everyone recognizes this is their downtown. With that, I will answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I have a couple. One, one is, Rock on the Dock was always like a Friday night event. Is that something that is, is done? Or, and two, who financed that? And then, the other thing I read in the, the supporting documents was alcohol was not going to be sold at these events, so I'm assuming that people can walk up and grab a beer at one of the establishments and walk down with their Dora cup and throw it, throw it in their new container when they're done.
Mr. President, through you and to Commissioner Meiser, this is intended to feel kind of like it used to be Party at the Plaza was the most recent version of Rock on the Dock, and I do think that Rock on the Dock, I believe, was funded through Main Street when that existed. And Party at the Plaza was a N C Y P, a North Coast Young Professionals event. We do hope that, you know, especially in previous years, this, we talked about last year, you know, having concerts before everything hit, and North Coast Young Professionals was at the table with us. So, it was just a really tight window, but we hope to bring a lot of people on board to help produce and partner, whether through volunteering or other things. And then, like you mentioned, definitely for at least, you know, the first month, there's a thirty-day window that you have to get your liquor permits to the state ahead of time through a nonprofit organization. So, we'd like to use the Dora, and again, try to support those small businesses, and then we'll see how things go.
Thank you.
It's obvious that we're, in this programming, we're playing catch-up ball, and we're going to catch up pretty quick at one hundred and eighty-two thousand. But I think that is justified from the standpoint that this tax that we've, that we've imposed for that amount is set to generate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we are additionally benefited by the Dorn Foundation, who's putting fifty thousand dollars in the game. Certainly reduces our out-of-pocket costs, and then on top of that, we spent zero last year. So, it's my point about playing catch-up, and I'm looking forward to it. I want to certainly thank the Dorn Foundation for their contribution, number one.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to shortchange the Lang Trust.
Oh, is it the Lang Trust?
Yeah.
I want to thank the Lang Trust, too.
Yeah.
Well, I'll thank them. But the other, the other, the committee that put this together needs a thank you also. They did something that probably would go somewhat unnoticed, but I think bears saying. They reached out to our Community Relations Commission and, and ran this, these concepts and the programming by them, so that, so that our programming showed diversity, you know, which is what our city is about and wants to continue to be about. So, whoever's idea that was, thank you for thinking of that, because that has certainly put us on the right track. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Because of a business relationship with Mr. Ernst, I'm going to be abstaining.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
The one hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars is a lot of money, and you did not give us any kind of information for comparison of what it costs to do the Rock on the Dock, or the, whichever the things that we've had down there before. So, there's really no context to whether this is a reasonable amount of money to pay. So, I'll simply ask you, how are you measuring success? You've indicated you're going to evaluate at the end of the year, something. What, 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 what has to happen for this to be worth us spending a hundred and eighty-two to two hundred thousand dollars a year again?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. I think those are really good and fair questions. I think this is quite a bit more money than they probably did spend for the N C Y P events. We did just purchase a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar stage that we hope to use, which, you know, the bands are going to be a little bit of higher quality than, than the local jam bands. We want to have a couple named bands. In regards to what measurables can we produce, I, I think that, number one, obviously attendance will be crucial, and we'll see how many people we draw to downtown. I hope that, you know, just by attending, we can get a good feel for that. And also, I know that our police officers do pretty well at, what is it called, Chief Oliver, like spot attendance. They helped me with some of that during the bicentennial events.
Yeah, it's our community impact officers.
So, I think, and then also, we're looking for feedback from our businesses on whether, when they stay open on Thursday nights, did they, you know, did people come in and buy ice cream? Did, did they stop at Fabulous Female? So, if there are other ways, you know, that we can measure this, I think we're entirely open to hearing about it. It being a pilot program this year, you know, we'll be making changes both in real time and in, as we plan it for next year. But if there are ideas out there in addition to those two, I, I think we're open to listening to them.
Thank you. I, I'm prepared to support this, for this first year, and I'm looking forward to seeing those numbers that you just talked about with the various businesses and whatever that the county is. I will suggest that getting a feel for it, it isn't really quite enough for, a feel for how many people were there is, needs to be a little more solid to spend two hundred thousand dollars next year, from my perspective. Thank you, though.
Additional comments, commissioners? Mr. Briggs, do you call, roll in the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Murray?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed, and thank you, Mr. Briggs, for putting that together for us. Mr. Briggs, do you present item number six, please?
Item number six is an ordinance authorizing a development agreement in connection with the development and redevelopment of certain real property in the city of Sudaski, Ohio, as part of a tax increment financing program under Ohio Revised Code Section five-seven-zero-nine-point-four-one, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Holliday, you're up. If you'd.
Thank you. Commissioner Brady, this evening, we have two pieces of legislation before you that will authorize us to take the initial steps that are needed to consider in the future, at a future commission meeting, the provision of support to the Hogrify Building project through the tax increment financing program. Just as a reminder, the Hogrify Building will be a new thirty thousand square foot mixed-use project on three parcels at Market Street and Columbus Avenue in downtown Sudaski. The estimated construction cost is over eight point eight million dollars. As you can imagine, a development like this is very difficult to finance. In fact, there's a very large financing gap, which is created based on the amount of expected rent revenue that can be generated from this project versus the construction costs. Fortunately, we have the TIF program as a tool to partially fill this development gap and make sure that this project gets completed. I'm going to pause here and try to share my screen, just to give a really quick overview of tax increment financing, so if you'll bear with me for just a moment. All right, can you see the screen?
Yes.
The slide I have up?
Enlarge it, please.
I have to make it larger for Mr. Poole.
Old eyes. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, tax increment financing is a tool that's available here in Ohio, and in this case, can help make sure that a development project occurs that otherwise would not happen. And the way that's done is by first establishing the baseline value of the project or the property. So, before the development occurs, the baseline value is determined. Those taxes continue to be paid throughout the life of the TIF, as they normally would. But by creating the TIF, what we're able to do is capture the increased tax value for the increment taxes, and we're able to redirect those to the city in the form of payments in lieu of taxes or pilots. Now, state law allows those pilot payments to be used for a variety of purposes. They can be used for public infrastructure to support the development. They can be used, in this case, through the forty-one, Section forty-one TIF, to support the development project directly, and they can also be used to compensate the schools for a portion of the taxes that were redirected to the TIF. This slide also shows that at the termination of the TIF period, the value remains at the higher amount, and all of those new taxes going forward after the termination of the TIF are paid to the local jurisdictions, just as if the TIF had never been put in place. So, really, we're just talking at this time about the new taxes that are only generated if this project can move forward. So, in terms of the Hogrify Building, that property, before the redevelopment project starts, is valued very, very low for taxing purposes. Only a hundred and seventy-four thousand for those three parcels, generating just over only four thousand dollars in taxes. What we're going to be proposing at a future city commission meeting is a thirty-year TIF, whereby one hundred percent of those new tax revenues are redirected into the TIF fund, with a baseline payment from the developer each year of two hundred thousand dollars. Those minimum two hundred thousand dollars of pilot funds will be distributed with one hundred and forty thousand dollars going back to the developer each year. They'll use that to support their development financing of the project. Twelve and a half percent of the pilot funds will be dispersed to the city schools, and I'll note that the schools have signed off on this arrangement through their approval of a compensation agreement at their last meeting. The balance of those pilot payments will be retained by the city. So, at the baseline payment of two hundred thousand dollars, it'd be thirty-five thousand dollars retained by the city to support public infrastructure that benefits this project. Initially, we'll be looking at the Columbus Avenue reconstruction project. So, as you can see, under this arrangement, both the city and the schools will receive more revenue than they otherwise would have if this project did not proceed. The TIF financing is critically important to make sure that the Hogrify Building is completed as designed. Our support will help leverage additional state funding that's being considered. It'll demonstrate our commitment to this project, and it absolutely prevents us from being left with a half-built building in our downtown, or basically just a hole right in the center of our downtown. And ultimately, it'll lift up the property values throughout the area. This is the only city investment that is currently being contemplated for this project, and I'll point out that these first two pieces of legislation, or these first two steps that we'll be taking, come at no cost to the city, so the developer will bear the full cost of the land transfer, and there's no cost to execute the development agreement. In conclusion, we really appreciate your consideration and support this evening of this important step, and with your support tonight, we can proceed so that we can come back to you at a future meeting for your consideration of the actual TIF ordinance. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions or comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiser.
You go first again. I, I think it's important to remember that this building was an imminent collapse hazard. I think it would have ended up like Esmond Dairy, or American Cran, or GNC Foundry, and we'd have been left with a cleanup. So, I think that this developer is the one that's sticking his neck out the most in this. I know a lot of people read this amount of money, and the school system's not getting what the taxes that they could have gotten, but you have to remember that this thing would have been a liability and not, and the schools wouldn't have been getting twelve and a half percent right now. So, and the school board agrees to it. I think you can't help but support it. I mean, it's, and, and really, this developer, and I'm sure the staff was behind it in planning, or maybe it might have been Mr. Lasko or Mr. Whoopser, but worked with the Hofkreizer to buy this property and try to, they went through Landmark, they went through the Interior, the Secretary of the Interior of the State. They tried to renovate it historically. They were going to get, I think, a half a million dollars in, in those funds. When it became a collapse hazard, or it fell down, had to be torn down and completely redeveloped, I think this just kind of fulfills that empty financing that was available prior to them buying the building. So, I'm going to support it.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Just for the record, I'll be abstaining from items six and seven due to my position on the nonprofit.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I'd like to direct a question to Mr. Hile, and I apologize, I didn't talk about this in advance, so it may be something that requires some, some answer later on. But there are a couple, couple comments that we received regarding the confidential treatment of certain documents, and you'll find that in Section Roman numeral twenty, on page fourteen of the agreement. And the thought is that that is somehow creating a veil for certain documents that otherwise would be public documents. As I look at that, the documents that are addressed there, those are normally documents that would be exempted from the public records law, because they do deal with economic development. So, I'd ask you to just put that in some context for us, if you could. And then, I'd just like to clarify, because this language is written the way lawyers write things, and I understand that it's not always the clearest, it's designed to be precise, but as I read the document, it's the other way around in terms of the obligation to reimburse attorney fees, and that it's the developer that would be responsible for reimbursing us, and not the other way around.
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Murray, that's correct. First on the reimbursement, the second half of Section twenty actually requires the developer to indemnify the city, and if, if we come to the situation where we have to incur legal costs to basically state why certain documents that they have designated as trade secrets are trade secrets, they would have to reimburse us for any of those costs that we incur in any of that legal action. So, it actually protects the city and makes sure that we don't incur additional costs for any public records-related actions. The first part is mostly meant to mirror existing state law. As Commissioner Murray pointed out, there is a current exception for trade secrets under the Ohio Public Records Act. The first part of this basically mirrors that exception for things that the developer designates as their trade secrets. And then, the second part basically says, one, we will notify you if someone requests them, and two, if for some reason we incur costs in explaining why that these are not documents that would be public records, the developer would pay that. So, all of the parts about the trade secret are actually just incorporating existing Ohio law on what is a public record and what is not a public record.
Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
The line, "The city will promptly notify the developer of any public records request made to it that seeks disclosure," that's state law?
No, sorry. Again, that's the part that I'm, I was talking about, the second part, where we're, we're saying that we will notify the developer if someone requests their trade secret documents, and the subpart B to that is the part that protects the city from incurring any costs.
Subpart B, I understand. I don't, I don't, I, I keep, I'm not, you need to talk some more. I'm not sure why I'm notifying the developer of a public records request. How does that, in what form does that go? What's that look like? Let's assume Chief, former Chief Orzak requests, makes, makes a public records request about, about this project.
Sure.
Now, what are you going to do? He fills out the paperwork and sends it to you. Now, what happens?
So, if, if, if that request is for information, then. So if that request is for information that involves information that the developer has designated as a trade secret, we would notify the developer in writing because they've requested information that is not otherwise publicly available information.
You're sending it to them for their permission, correct? Is that what the?
No.
No?
No, they will have already designated the information as a trade secret.
They need to know why.
It's just a normal notice that someone is requesting their confidential proprietary information.
What's the purpose of that? I'm trying to figure out what, I'm trying to determine whether, why it's, if the law, okay, it's not already written in the law, we added it in for a reason.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty standard.
What's the purpose that helps, that's of value to the citizens? Citizens consider this?
Well, I mean, keep in mind that the next step of that is if we have to incur costs, it would be, it really is part of the two-step process of someone's requesting information that is not normally public information under the Ohio Public Records Act. It may involve your trade secret information. You may be incurring costs to the extent that we incur costs explaining that to the citizen or responding to any legal actions.
Okay. And really, and the reason I'm being picky about this is because to the public, it's a different, these are two separate things. I fully understand if there's a court action filed, that we would cooperate. They're paying for the, any legal action, but we're cooperating with them, whatever that means, it doesn't cost us anything. And that we would notify them because there's court action. Just because somebody requested, a citizen requested something, telling them about it, and that's why I asked you what the form was. As a citizen, we don't even have to tell you who we are if we request information. So I'm not, so I'm not really on board with you deciding that you're going to tell somebody that I did.
Well, it's.
Because I don't even have to tell you to begin with. If the state doesn't require us revealing ourselves to you, we should not add more to the state law by telling these folks we're going to do it for them.
So again, this addition is to protect the city. If we're going to charge someone by contract legal fees, and the first time they receive notice of that is after we've already incurred those costs, that's potentially problematic that they were not on notice, that they, per the contract, that they could be incurring those costs because they have designated something as a trade secret.
Okay. That's close enough. It needs to make sense, and the public needs to understand.
Sure, absolutely.
What we're trying to do. And that's why I'm dwelling on this so long.
No, I appreciate it. I also appreciate that you asked a lawyer to talk more, which is a very dangerous.
All right. So essentially, we should do this because it protects the city.
Correct.
And essentially, people who ask for information, they're not entitled to get. And you will know what that, you'll know what that is, correct?
Correct.
Ahead of time.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not like I request, and then you go ask them?
No.
If it's a trade secret, we'll already know. Okay, fine, then essentially, we can identify, that's fine. Thank you.
Additional questions, commissioners? Mr. Briggs, we call a roll in the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Stay.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Stay.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Briggs, we present the last item on our agenda, number seven.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a conveyance of parcels of real property from Cook Building LLC and approving a reconveyance to Cook Building LLC as provided by section 5709.41b of the Ohio Revised Code and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Holliday, my understanding of this, this is a kind of a quirky formality, but if you would just give us the Reader's Digest version, I think we may all be satisfied with why we're doing this.
Yes. Commissioner Brady, this is the second piece of preliminary legislation or preliminary steps that we have to take in order to consider a TIF ordinance at a future commission meeting. This will allow us to just temporarily take title to the three parcels and then immediately transfer those back to the developer. There'll be no cost to the city, but state code does require for us to do a TIF to be in the chain of title of property. So this action will.
Thank you. Questions, comments, commissioners? Ms. Briggs, we call a roll in the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meiser?
He stepped out.
Stepped out.
Mr. Meiser's left the building.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Stay.
And now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Stay.
And is Mr. Meiser back?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Thank you for returning, Commissioner. It concludes the regular general. We'll turn to our city manager for his report. Mr. Whipser, you still want?
Yep. Thank you, commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with one donation this evening. Paint and materials supplied by a grant from the Jewett Family Foundation Fund through the fire, for Friends of the Greenhouse, 501(c)(3), volunteers Bill and Barb Beal painted 13 concrete urns and bases. These concrete urns located throughout Washington Park have been in need of a fresh paint job for years. I ask for a motion to accept that generous donation.
So been a motion and a second discussion.
I just want to make sure that we also thank the volunteers, Bill and Barb Beal, who did the painting. And that was a lot of time to paint all those, so thank you for that as well.
Absolutely.
Without objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. And thanks to everyone involved.
Thank you. Also, the Whitman-Weber Community Ride will take place at the Jackson Street Pier on Thursday, July 8th. The event will start at 6:00 p.m. and will include speakers, free icekeeping and community bike ride with Sandusky Bay cycles at 6:30 p.m. This was the kickoff that was intended to happen last year but couldn't due to COVID to thank Whitman-Weber and to celebrate their commitment to the Sandusky Bay pathway, particularly the portion of it which is named for them, a Longshoreline Drive. In addition to that, I just wanted to comment that I had a chance to attend an event with Commissioner Harris on Friday evening, a minority business enterprise sort of kickoff event for work that Commissioner Harris and others have been leading for several months, particularly as facilitated by Erie County Economic Development Corporation. And it was an inspiring evening on a Friday night. I bet 50 to 75 individuals showed up who were either entrepreneurs in Sandusky or aspiring entrepreneurs in Sandusky. It was an incredibly diverse group, and they learned a little bit about what resources could exist for them. And I know I've heard from several of the commissioners about their desire to potentially increase what we're doing for historically disadvantaged businesses. And I can tell you that there was a great group of energy in that room on Friday evening, and it left me absolutely optimistic about the future of Sandusky. But it also was, I feel like sometimes I've met every young person in Sandusky in the last seven years doing this job, and there are a lot of people in that room that I haven't met that night. So it told me that I have to get out more, and in turn, I think that means that the entire city has to get out more and to meet folks where they're at. But we really look forward to continuing that work, Mr. Harris, and seeing what the city can do. And Director Holliday had also attended that event, so we'll be in touch soon with different programs, hopefully, that can help support that work. In addition to that, for the police, Officer Jose Diaz was commissioned as a full-time officer on Monday, June 14th, along with Thomas Womack, who was commissioned full-time on June 24th, and John Dusa hired as a full-time officer on Friday, June 25th. You got to meet them all earlier tonight. We're happy to welcome them onboard. For the building department, we're excited that Connor Rush has been bid and awarded a position as a building inspector effective June 24th. He will work closely with the building official, Chief Building Official Scott Tom, to obtain his certifications for residential and commercial building. Connor's been working in sewer maintenance in his education in construction management. We look forward to many years of service from Connor. We also welcomed Ron Snyder, a recently retired police sergeant, to the city as a code compliance inspector beginning this past June 21st. He has been a longtime employee of the city, and we look forward to him using his knowledge and experience in the application of our laws and ordinances for code compliance. For public works, we want to welcome Jacob Sattler, who has been hired as a maintenance two in water distribution, and congratulate Connor Lenth, who was promoted to shift operator two at the wastewater treatment plant. We'd also like to give a special thanks to our irreplaceable volunteers who have once again beautified so many locations throughout the city, like Washington Park, Facer Park, Talon Floor Park, Lyons Park, and the Meg Street Pier. We are blessed to have such wonderful people who love this city as much as we do. For community development, we have received a permit request for an economic development trax permit from Tambo Entertainment LLC at 224 East Water Street. The new owners of the historic E and K Winery are looking to obtain this liquor permit so they can sell at their future business. They expect to create six new jobs and will make an estimated investment of $450,000 into their building and business. It is requested by the city commission by motion to provide authorization to sign off on the trax transfer from indicating the city of Sandusky endorses and acknowledges this transfer as an economic development project, which will benefit the community. The proposed trax transfer will come back to the city commission once additional, one additional time in the near future by the Division of Liquor Control for one more stop where the city will indicate whether a hearing is requested prior to being issued by the state. Do I need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve that transfer.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you. Also, the Economic Development Incentive Committee will meet on July 13th. Five economic development fund applications are scheduled for review. For the planning department, with Aaron Blair onboard as chief planner as of June 21st, the planning division is focused on organizing the allocation of daily tasks and prioritizing larger initiatives. Aaron will be reaching out to initiate a conversation with each commissioner as part of her work to understand the goals and objectives for the city. Also, some community members continue to be interested in the discussion of new transient overlay districts to the zoning map. The planning division is conducting research to determine a recommendation for the planning commission, which is expected to include a public meeting to listen to resident feedback on the topic. The next Arts and Culture Commission meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 20th at 5:15 p.m. Landmark Commission is scheduled for Wednesday, July 21st at 5:00 p.m. Board of Zoning Appeals is scheduled for Thursday, July 15th at 4:30 p.m. And Planning Commission is scheduled for Wednesday, July 28th at 5:00 p.m. Finally, Recreation, the city has accepted delivery of the New Firelands Regional Health System mobile LED movie screen. Preparation is underway for the first movie, which will occur on July 6th at 7:00 p.m. All are invited to join at the Jackson Street Pier for a special showing of Zootopia. And then finally, other summer recreation programming is in full swing. View the latest programs and events at www.cityofsandusky.com/recreation and www.facebook.com/sanduskyrock. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the city manager, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
Yeah, is there any chance that we're going to get, see some more benches at the bus stops this summer? I think we do own them, don't we?
Benches at the bus stop we own? I think we do.
Yeah.
Mr. Horseman, would Mr. Horseman speak to that?
Mr. Horseman is not available tonight, but I don't know if Director Holliday can speak specifically to.
Just yes, we have them, and we can get them all out everywhere or not. That's all I'm interested in. What's the plan for getting them out, getting benches out?
Getting benches out, existing benches, you mean, out at the bus stops?
No, places where we don't have it.
Oh, getting more benches. We have to, so through the commission president to Commissioner Poehl, we have discussed in the past and potentially looking at any one-time uses of revenue, whether it's federal dollars or otherwise, really beefing up transit waiting environments, which includes benches and, you know, in some cases shelters at busier stops. We do have to identify funds for that, but it is something that's a priority and that we can look into more closely in the future.
Okay.
Commissioner Poehl, you got a location? You're thinking of specific locations?
No, not specifically, just in general, yeah. We need to, as we move forward, we need to.
Can't be an expensive item, I would think. No.
No.
People sitting on, people sitting on the snow, sitting on the ground in the snow, we don't want that.
No.
If we don't have to.
Additional questions for city manager? If not, the next item on our agenda is items of old business. Any items of old business, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meiser.
I think this is old business because it was on the consent agenda and it was voted on, so I'm just curious. I know the fire, police, and planning all supported the liquor permit change to Salvage Center LLC. I think that's the old Ernst Burger's building on Lawrence and Jefferson, maybe. It was transferred to the old Toss building on West Monroe. Is that going to be a bar or what is that?
Commissioner President to Mr. Meiser, I kind of checked into that this afternoon. I believe that they're doing is like a banquet for like a wedding, parties and things like that. It's not going to be a bar, from my understanding. There is some processes they're going to have to do to go through planning and that to conduct that business. But as far as the commercial property, they do have the right to have the liquor permit at that facility. They still have to jump through some hoops to make it how they want to run it.
For an assembly, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional items of old business. Items of new business. Any items of new business? I will lead it off with a little housekeeping. I need to set a motion, I need to have a motion to set a public hearing for July the 12th, city commission meeting for the 2022 tax budget. Can I have a motion for that?
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, and that public hearing is set. I need a motion for an additional public hearing to schedule a hearing for August the 9th for the city commission meeting for an amendment to the zoning map for 431 Columbus Avenue.
So move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Without objection, motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, and those public hearings are set for July the 12th and August the 9th. Additional items of new business. Commissioners, I spent, myself and Mr. Whipser have spent some time this last week or 10 days both monitoring the progress that the Good Time is making on their donation, donations to repair their boat and return it to service to Sandusky. And we think that progress is significant, and we think that it's going to take, it's going to take some public involvement to make that happen. And we have discussed internally the concept of providing dollars from our COVID surplus dollars that we've received, out of our $18 million, providing some of those dollars to the Good Time to close the gap, to get that boat back in service and back in the city of Sandusky. It is an iconic business, been with us about 14 years, serves, serves and has served thousands of people in this community. And our hope is that he can continue to raise donations, to be able to implement dollars that this commission may be willing to provide, but that is certainly up to the will of this commission, as I've reiterated, both to the owner and to the media.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poehl.
I would like to make the motion to request that staff bring legislation to provide up to $100,000 as a grant to the Good Time. The funds necessary to get the boat back in Sandusky are $325,000. To date, donations are more than 115. The city stipulations for this will be as follows. $100,000 will be the last money in. The Good Time will produce a business plan for our review while working with Ecodec to do that. And the city will have the use of the Good Time for up to three times per year to supplement our youth activities for five years. Good Time will also start paying rent on the docks in 2022.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poehl.
The Good Time is a business that has been an icon and part of this community for a long time. The $100,000 grant is well within what we've done for other businesses. This is a business that brings up to 15,000 people a year downtown, and we would certainly miss that since the grant money that we're providing is grant money that's provided as stimulus money for that very purpose from the federal government. I think this is absolutely something we should do.
Additional discussion, commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
At what point, is there like a deadline for him to raise the funds or what are parameters some parameters that are supporting this legislation that Commissioner Poole just read?
Through the, sorry, I was going to say through the Commission President to Commissioner Twine. We have not yet drafted the legislation or the contract. The general statements that Commissioner Poole read were things that we stated upfront, but we can absolutely incorporate a deadline into the legislation when we bring it back. And we can be working on that between now and the next meeting. So if there are any other comments or feedback, but I absolutely agree, it can't just be an open-ended offer until the end of time. So we can talk to the Good Time, and we can talk internally and figure out what that deadline is and incorporate that into the agreement or any other suggestions that the commission has or that we glean from staff as we start to draft the legislation for the grant.
Does anybody have any idea as to possibly when that could happen, or you prefer not to discuss that at this moment?
When, when he would have raised...
When he would have raised the amount of funds that the expectation is that the $100,000 would kick in?
Through the Commission President, Commissioner Twine, I think there's an expectation that really by the end of this year at the latest, he would need to raise all of these funds to bring it back and hopefully sooner. So potentially the end of 2021 would be a good deadline. And should the commission choose to extend that deadline, if he's continuing to work, we would have to bring it back at that time. But I guess that would be my early suggestion is to frame it by the end of the calendar year. But if people think that's too long or too soon, you know, just let us know. And at times, we have built into grant agreements a deadline with a one-time ability for the manager's office to extend by up to a certain amount of time. We could do that, or we could just bring it back to the commission as well if we feel like we're going to need it. But hopefully, we'll know by the end of this year whether he's able to accomplish raising the rest of the funds, I would think.
So possibly it could not be in operation this summer. It could be next...
It's a possibility for sure, being that we're about to be in July. I think there's a hope that he could be up and running this summer, but I don't want to presume that that's possible based on how late we are in the season and the additional $100,000-plus that would need to be raised.
Additional comments or questions, commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Mike.
I mean, I like some of Mr. Poole's recommendations. I think in the legislation, we should make sure that if we're going to put $100,000 in it, we have some parameters set, like the boat has to stay in Sandusky for X amount of years. If the owner sells it even, it has to stay. And if it goes out of business, maybe there's some sort of a lean against it. I don't know. But I'd like to have that all considered in the legislation and in the documentation when it comes to the...
Good point. Include that in the legislation.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole.
With regard to a deadline, consider this. Why don't we talk to, well, first of all, we have $18 million over the next four years. So that $100,000 is just sitting in the bank. So I think considering that this is a business that has served us for so long that we would consider just asking him where his comfort level is and dragging this out. Okay, I would expect that, obviously, we can wait until he has exhausted all of his resources for trying to save this business. And I would be really uncomfortable trying to jam deadlines on this gentleman that we don't, we have no need to do, unless that's wrong.
No, no, no.
If you have some way, reason that this $100,000 is going to weigh heavily on our future if we don't put a deadline on it, I'll certainly listen to that. But otherwise, I would, that's my two cents about that. We should be working very hard with him to make this a reality because it's a business that we already know contributes significantly to downtown businesses.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Twine.
I don't believe in an open-ended, in perpetuity. And I don't want to restrict Mr. Lamb. I think, I asked a few questions about how long do we think this might take. It may not be this year. I'm cool with that. But I don't want to leave an open-ended offer out there.
Understood.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Mike.
I think the reality is that the yard that did the work is going to be the...
Exactly.
...determine the timing. So as long as they're willing to wait, we should be willing to wait.
Exactly.
But they're not going to wait that long.
No.
Exactly.
Mr. Briggs, will you call a roll on that motion, please?
Absolutely. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meinzler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
That motion is passed. Any additional items of new business? Are there any residents that would like to provide a comment on any item affecting city business? I'd ask you to limit your comment to five minutes. Step to the podium, identify yourself, and we will hear you.
Greetings, Harlem America, 20648 Street. On April 8th, I asked for a bench for the elderly, the handicapped, or the injured that are going in the former Dr. Gallagher's office. And I've seen no progress on that, and I have had a couple of people ask me about that. So I'm asking you if you can put a bench out there. And it was nice that someone brought up benches tonight. On June 14th, I asked why we have mailboxes and lots of orange barrels along Venice Road, creating a hazard for both the bicyclists, the vehicles, and pedestrians. You know, it is a hazard situation. And I also asked why there was no turn lane created for buses that are going to be going on the Thorpe Drive once that construction is all done. And the questions were deferred to Mr. Klein, and I'm still waiting for an answer on any and all of that. I know your job as commissioners is not easy. It just seems tough for a citizen to progress or see some progress outside of downtown or get answers to questions in a kind of a timely manner. So with that said, I'm testing the waters for running for city commissioner in the next election, and maybe I'll get the answers that I'm looking for at that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Next.
You can't sit in God's alone. I've lost track of when you had meetings. You timed it perfect. That was horizontal rain out there for a long time. My comments are more about... Oh, Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. My comments are about the Good Time. You're talking about a lot of money, and that's the scary thing. My concern is he's dealing with another company that has his boat. And I'm sure they have a deadline of their own because they can't keep that boat there forever. People keep going, well, 6,000 people were interested in saving him, then if everybody donated $100, he'd have it by now. And a lot of people don't have $100. So if they donated 10 or 20, that's great. But I'm sure there's more people in this city that could donate that. And I know people go, well, other businesses went out of business. But I'm not so sure what type of year he had in 2019 because the pier was all tore up. This is just my comments. I'm not speaking for him or anything else. But when people come down to Jackson Street Pier to get on that boat and entertain themselves for however long out in the bay, they come back and they buy things at the stores here. They buy gasoline at the gas stations, and they eat because sometimes maybe they didn't get enough pizza on the boat, stop for a beer, whatever. I'm hoping people pull together for him. I've made my donation. A lot of people that I know have made their donations, and we're just hoping that it pulls out. But it really can't wait a long time. I'm sure he wants to get back as soon as possible. But I don't know what kind of deadline he's facing with the boat company, the shipyard that's taking care of the boat. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Additional comments? Mr. Briggs, would you read any email comments from residents, please?
Commissioner Brady, we received two. The first came from Ms. Jennifer Ashburn. And hold on, I had her address pulled up on a different one. My apologies. I'll come back to hers. Sharon Johnson of 1139 Fifth Street in Sandusky said about a month ago, the commissioners voted to approve two business grants. Mr. Brady voted to approve both grants without disclosing to the public that he had submitted signed proposals on both city grants.
Mr. Briggs, if I may, I noticed my name in this, so I feel compelled to respond to that. Apparently, Ms. Johnson's concerned that I voted without disclosing to the public that I had submitted, that my company had submitted a proposal, and these people were using a city grant to pay for that work. Let me be perfectly clear. My company has never received a request from Ms. Kropkin, who is the owner of, is it 654? Whatever the companies that we voted on a couple of weeks ago. We've never received a request for a sign. If she listed Brady's sign as her vendor, that's something that she may have been thinking about perhaps in the future. You'll have to ask her. My business has no business relationship with her whatsoever. That's number one. Number two, the accusation regarding, which regards Hot Dog Tony's, is even more comical. Brady's Sign Company submitted a proposal for a sign for Hot Dog Tony's in April of 2020, about 15, 16 months ago. We did not ask them at that time if they intended to acquire public funds to pay for that sign. Maybe from now on, our salespeople should ask that question of every customer that comes along. We should ask them if they're ever going to use Sandusky funds. But what makes it more interesting is that Hot Dog Tony's bought a sign, not from Brady's Sign Company. And that sign has been up for more than a year. So prior to voting on this legislation a meeting ago or two meetings ago, I drove by Hot Dog Tony's to make certain that there was a sign up and that it wasn't our sign, and that I would have no conflict in voting for that legislation. So that's why I voted for that legislation without informing the public that my company had created a proposal for that job. If anybody thinks that's a conflict, I do not. If my law director thinks that's a conflict, I'd be glad to hear that. But I think that should be the end of this story. Any additional, any additional comments?
We have one additional comment from Ms. Jennifer Ashburn at 2112 Parkview Boulevard in Sandusky. She wrote to Eric Whipster, "Thank you for speaking with me after the meeting. My proposal for the MacArthur Park area is as follows. I envision MacArthur Park becoming a self-sufficient village, complete with sidewalks, streetlights, affordable housing, B&amp;Bs, and quaint shops. Think Yellow Springs or Martha's Vineyard. Number one, allow me to purchase city-owned buildings using a mortgage from the land bank. The price the city paid for 2111 Parkview was $48,000. Provide me with a $48,000 mortgage. I will give the money back to the city and proceed to renovate the property and provide affordable housing to Sandusky's underserved community as I have done with my own building for the past 10 years. Two, just as a $33,000 grant was awarded to Hot Dog Tony's to renovate their bathrooms, I would apply for a community development grant to renovate the buildings in the park. Number three, instead of evicting families, which they did at 2111 Parkview and tearing down the buildings, we could use this opportunity to build a neighborhood/city collaboration, which could be a model for the nation. Four, I look forward to working with you. And five, please forward this to whoever is responsible so it can be read into the minutes."
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. Mr. Holliday, I will allow you to, I believe that is in your area of expertise, and I will ask you to respond to Ms. Ashburn. Any additional comments? Mr. Holliday?
Thank you, Commissioner Brady. I think in large part, we share Ms. Ashburn's vision for MacArthur Park neighborhood and appreciate her involvement and assistance with us in the past. We will be undertaking a master plan for the South Side neighborhood and really hope to further develop those concepts that she mentioned. However, our city existing plans do point out that in that neighborhood, when houses are identified that are in substandard condition and are not able to be renovated in the way that adds quality to our neighborhoods, that those should be cleared and held for future new construction, which is the case with 211 Parkview. I want to point out that that property was vacant at the time we acquired it, so the city did not evict anyone from that property. And I have been advised by the seller that before selling the property to us, he did move each one of the tenants that was in that property into other properties that he owns. So we have now acquired that property and look forward to continuing to work with Ms. Ashburn and other residents in that neighborhood to plan for the future of that area, which we expect will include the construction of new affordable housing on some of those development properties that we've now created.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday. Commissioners, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.